I'm going to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the workshop. We're going to change the order just a bit so that we can hear from the folks from Item 6, Discussion Regarding Fencing and Improvements to Hannah Springs at Campbell Park. We'll start with that.
I'm on the, a member of the, uh, Lampaces County Historical Commission and on the Museum Board and the Lafta Board. I have to learn how to say no because apparently I can't now. That three boards is probably too much. Can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay, I'll try to stay this distance. And we've come here today to propose, um, a solution for what's to be done with Hannah Springs that I think accomplishes all the city's goal and I hope, um, will be, if not cheaper, not much more expensive than what the city already kind of plans on doing. But it's Hannah Springs, it's, it's not an overstatement to say that Hannah Springs is, after the courthouse, probably the most significant historical site in Lampaces. If it weren't for the, um, if it weren't for the springs, there wouldn't be a Lampaces. And what you see on the screen up there now is the first known map of Lampaces. And you can see in the upper, upper center, kind of upper toward the right, a drawing of the springs and it, they're called the sulfur springs. The map's from 1855. It's hand drawn. And just to the left of them is a hotel that was built by Elizabeth and George Scott. Elizabeth was, was John Burleson's daughter and he deeded her all the land around there. And they subdivided what's now the downtown to, uh, for people to build businesses to cater to the needs of the thousands of people that came to the springs and camped out around the springs. So Hannah Springs really are the reason that Lampaces exists. And what, our proposal is, just in brief, to take the, the new wall that was placed around the old foundational wall, take it down, which we think will make the springs more safer, and then build a six-foot wrought iron fence either on that platform or more likely right adjacent to it. So you can actually see the water in the springs because the water is the big deal about the springs. If you, um, no, if you, yeah, if you, we'll show that in a minute. If you can go back to where we were, please. These are old, these are old photographs from the, um, the museum's collection and the Historical Commission's collection, um, showing Hannah Springs. And, um, I guess I should have told you who is, who is kind of supporting this proposal. It's, um, the Lampaces County Historical Association, the Lampaces County Museum, Vision Lampaces, Lafta, um, and Heritage Lampaces. And Vision Lampaces are all behind this. That photo is the earliest known photo of Hannah Springs taken in the 1870s. The Scots sold it to John Hannah and his sister, and his sister Isabella Hannah in 1867. And they made improvements. They built the first bathhouses and they built a low containment wall around the springs. It had been kind of a boggy mess before that. So that's the, and you can see there's no, there's no wall around it then. And that's in the 1870s. It was the only game in town. Nobody went to Hancock Springs until 1882 when they built the Park Hotel. It was all, everybody went to, only to Hannah Springs. There's another photo, I think that one's from the 1890s or the early part of the 20th century. And there's a lot of photo postcards of Hannah Springs, which just will tell you how important they were. There's another one, again, there's no, you can see a little low, looks like wire or maybe wrought iron fence around that. But again, it's no, the wall that's there now, it's about this high. And the springs are situated so you can't see the water. And with a, with a chain link or wire fence outside that, you can't get close enough to look over the wall into the water. And if you all saw the Day Tripper episode on Lampaces, there's one scene where he's looking over the wall, um, before the chain link fence was there. And he's saying his favorite part of Lampaces was the incredibly crystal clear water in the springs. Um, and that, I just brought up a couple of the postcards. There's literally dozens of them and they all show the same thing, which is a low foundational wall. Okay, you can do the next slide if you would. And that's, uh, another indication of their importance to Lampaces. That's on a check at the Goldworth Bank. And that shows Hannah Springs. It's a little fanciful because as far as we know, there was never no, any stone tower there or giant dancing water fountain in the middle, but it just shows the importance of Hannah Springs to the town. That's from 1891. So our main festival is called Spring Ho and, uh, the banners around the square urge us to celebrate our springs. Next slide, please. But that's the way Hannah Springs looks now, um, which is not very inviting. And it hasn't been cleaned out in a while, so algae and stuff's accumulated and it doesn't, it's, that's kind of what the water looks like now. It's not crystal clear like it was when the, uh, Day Tripper guy was here. So our proposal, well, the, the, the wall that's there now, you can see where it was plopped down on the earlier lower foundational wall. You can see the dividing line there. The, the stones in the upper part are, tend to be smaller, um, and kind of not put together quite as well as the lower ones. Next slide, if you would, these are just slides showing you where the, there's a very clear demarcation, um, between the upper wall and the lower one. We've talked to a stone, a master stonemason, a specialized in historic restoration, and he gave us a, a quote of 6,500 on taking the wall out. And he would take it out to produce minimum debris falling into the spring. He'll section it and then this peel backwards sections of the wall. Uh, next, next slide, please. There's a, there's a photo, I think from the 18, late 1880s, early 1890s that shows a wrought iron fence around it. And with the input from the Historical Commission, we have designed a fence that looks as much like that as we can, that also meets all the code provisions for fences around public pools. Um, and that, that fence is the one we proposed to put in, painted green to pick up the green color around the square. But that will, that will, that's pretty much a childproof fence. A child cannot get through that fence. So, and with the wall down, if an adult gets into the, the springs, they should be able to get out. And the woman that got in a couple of years ago to go swimming couldn't get out because of the wall, because when you're in the water down there, you can't reach the top. And without, with the wall out, um, I'm pretty sure that most adults can reach the edge and pull themselves out. So that combined with a childproof fence should make it about as safe as you can get it. That's what it looks like right now with the wall and with the wire fence about three feet out from the wall. So you can't really get close enough to the wall to look in at the water. But here's what it would look like with our proposal. Because the water is the key. And let me just, let me just read the, real quick, this is a newspaper article, Lampaces newspaper article, describing the springs and a bathhouse in great detail. There is outside of the building, a pool of the sulfur water of some 60 feet in size, varying in depth from 10 to 16 feet. This is not used for bathing purposes, but it's surrounded by an ornamental iron railing and attracts the attention of all visitors. And that was one of the attractive things about Hannah Springs. The incredibly clear water, you could see from all over the park. Um, and you can see from the postcard, the water is the main feature. And we'd like to return it to that historical condition so you can see that clean water anywhere in the park when you enter the park. And having the wall taken down, and of course there'll be a gate in the fence, I think will make it easier to get in there and clean it out. And volunteers can, we have a lot of volunteers standing by to do that. So, um, that shouldn't be, it's to the expense. And I, we've talked to Chris Eichardt, um, and he, um, I think is on board with all this. He would rather not put the, the fence on the old base because he's afraid it'll destabilize it and he's probably correct. But we're okay with putting it, as he suggested, just flush with the lower ring, which will make maintenance easier and, and that kind of thing. So, and the Parks Board approved the recommendation last Thursday. So I think all the major players are kind of in alignment with this. It seems to make sense. Beautify the park, historic restoration, safer. And my understanding is the, the city's allocated $40,000 for this project. And the fence, Chris Odom, who's a master ironworker, helped design it. And he said that the fence, uninstalled, would be 32,000. And Juan said he would bid 6,500 for removing the fence. So that just leaves the insulation costs. So we're, we're talking about right at the same amount of money, we think. So, um, that's our proposal. And if anybody has any questions or comments or anything.
Mr. Cavnas, what's the procedure to get rid of the algae or whatever your sayings in the, in the spring now? How are you going to clean that out?
It's basically a manual process. You get in there. The springs is shallow, shallowest around the ring. And it's about, well, Andy Fishy's sitting back there, he's, he, he and some other volunteers cleaned it out last. It's about 60 deep or something, quite around the edge.
About 50 around the perimeter and a deeper center. It has been off here for two, two spring hoes, not this year, but, um, it's been 19. And we cleaned it out a week before spring ho. So it stayed pristine for several months.
I was just curious because it used to stay a lot clearer than it has over the last few years. Do we have any idea why it's creating such algae sludge?
I, I don't know, but you may be right. It might be impurities creeping into the water. I, I don't know, I'd just be speculating if I, if I had to guess. But, um, we have, we have enough volunteers that we could clean it out when it needs to be cleaned out. And it would be nice to keep it in that pristine state because it, it, it really is beautiful when it's, when it's clear. The, the last, the last health resort was the Crystal Springs Sanitarium out there in the 20s. And it was aptly named. And after that, it was kind of not used and fell, and that's when the wall, I think, was built to keep flood debris out. But the, when the, when the park was, was turned into a city park in 94, they moved a whole lot of dirt. And I think flooding is no longer really an issue even without the wall. If it, the water got high enough to, to wash debris in without the wall being there, it would be high enough to flood all of downtown Lampaces and then debris in the springs would be the least of our concerns. So.
Are there any other questions?
I'm sorry. I have one for Finley in regards to TML insurance. They have any requirements regarding us insuring this thing for liability purposes?
We have been in contact with the risk pool and Chris Eichardt probably has the more detailed information than I can provide, other than we haven't been in consultation with them and they have indicated the appropriate height of the fence and, and, and other measures, but.
There you are. Yes, the only requirements that they, that they mentioned was having a six-foot fence in place, just as, as we do in the playgrounds, uh, spacing between these uprights has to be less than three inches or more than 11. Idea there being that a child cannot get trapped between there. If their head goes through, their torso has to follow. But that's the only requirements that they, and some signage saying, "Do not enter." Not that the fence should say that already, but.
Or is there any lighting proposed?
Not currently.
Okay.
But it, uh, there's a light right there, actually where that, where that sidewalk turns back to the right, right there in the photo, there's a light right there. We have lights all along the walkway out there currently.
Hannah Springs got its first electric light to illuminate the springs on December 15th, 1899. I just kind of happened to run across that in one of the papers I was looking at, one of the old papers.
Did Flint put that in?
Um, I, I could, I could almost remember the name of the guy that owned the electric company.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
We were just, we were talking about the, the, I just happened to run across a newspaper article about the first electric lights brought into Lampaces. And one of them went to Hannah Springs and it was December 15th, 1899. And it told how many electric lights everybody in town had, because it was a, very much a status symbol then.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir. We appreciate you coming. Thanks, Chris.
Mayor and Council, I might just add a couple of quick items. You know, I think based on the conversation, I don't think there's any objection for staff to formalize some of the costs in terms of quotations and estimates. And if you'd like us to move forward with preparing those for your, obtaining those for your consideration. A couple of things that we will have to do is we will have to also get a price for the installation as well as the footings for the fence. So we'll try to start, we'll package that up for you and bring it back to you for your consideration.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Next item is discussion and updates related to COVID-19. Chief Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The numbers again are going to be from DSHS and also from Public Health Region 7. Currently, the state of Texas, total COVID-19 cases to date from the beginning, 3,566, 127. Lampaces County now has a total of 3,019. Active cases in the state, 67,278. This number's down from 76,594 two weeks ago. That's a decrease of just over 9,000. Active cases in Lampaces County are, are down to 29. Two weeks ago, we were at 38. New cases of COVID-19 reported across the state today, 1,398. This is up from last Monday when we reported only 1,000, just over 1,000, 1,044. So it is, uh, a little bit higher this Monday than it was two weeks ago. Fatalities recorded earlier today across the state was 10. We have not had any new fatalities recorded here in the state of Texas in the last two weeks. So, uh, our, DSHS still continues to show us at 66. Public Health shows it's 65 on the fatalities. So that's held consistent. We've not updated that on either end of that. Looking at the bad news, uh, we get the weekly updates from Public Health as far as when, I think I've reported that, hey, we had one case this last time. Well, we actually had 15 this last report on Friday. So we did go up quite a bit as far as 15 new cases this last Friday. So that was kind of a shocker. Hospitalizations across the state, we're down to 2,618. In our trauma service area, L, we're actually at 22 now, only 22. Of that 22, 21 of them are adults, leaving one pediatric patient. Nine of the adults are in ICU. And for vaccinations, just for 76550, we're now at 5,880 that have had the initial shot and then fully vaccinated is 5,135. And then we're going to go across the state this evening. Across the state of Texas, we've had 15,800,000 people that have been vaccinated. That sounds like a whole lot, but that's roughly half of the state of Texas. Uh, that's 54.4% of those eligible for vaccines. So, does anybody have any questions on COVID-19 for this evening?
I was wondering if you've got any idea about that spike that went up so much, uh, active cases?
You know, I, I don't know what would trend to that or what would cause that. That was just, even when I looked at it, I was like, and I looked back through and looked again and sure enough, that was, I mean, it, it went up to 15. But the, the good news in that is we're still have gone down as far as our ca, active cases here for the County of Lampaces in the last two weeks. So as long as we're putting that number down, I'm good with that.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Item number three, discussion regarding the overview of the short-term objectives of the comprehensive plan.
Mayor and Council, this is a follow-up continuation of the last three meetings where we've taken kind of bites out of our short-term objectives and wanted to, again, reinforce some of the steps going forward as well as receive your input. What you have at your place at the dais is a handout, which is like this. Basically, this is a roll-up of all of the items that were presented to you over the last three meetings. It is, uh, it contains the, the 18 objectives that we looked at. Those 18 objectives require at least at this point, 68 action steps. And we know that there will be changes as we proceed. Changes not only due to different priorities, but also due to financial considerations, staff time, council time, and, and obviously maybe some changing priorities. I would also anticipate changes on the fly. We may go down a path on one objective and decide that, you know, we really need to include some additional stakeholders. We need to make sure that we engage the public more. We need to make sure that we, uh, address certain items within those objectives. Uh, I would envision that, uh, we would spend a majority of our upcoming planning session talking about, uh, the comprehensive plan and the implementation. And I think a couple of quick questions for Council is, i- is there a clear understanding of how we kind of take that first step? And is there a clear, uh, do you like the format? I think one of the things that you'll see is very obviously absent from the form that I've given you are the target dates, because those will be determined based on priority and our ability to move forward. There may be things that we want to start that may take every bit of two years to implement. But is the format all right? And, uh, is, is there a clear understanding of kind of how we continue this process moving forward?
Any comments from Council? Everybody's good?
I like the format, Finley. I, I think it lends itself to being a, a scorecard almost. And you can check it off or you can, you can provide a status or an up-to-date on, on each one of the, the action steps.
Well, that's what I like, is that we can go back and, and see where we're at and just, we just kind of monitor our flow as we go along.
That's all I had on this item, Mayor, just to check in and make sure that, uh, we're prepared to move forward. Certainly, this maybe is a little easier than to go through the, all the old slides from the last three meetings and, and see if it all makes sense to you.
Great. Next item is discussion regarding our council work session, agenda.
Again, with, there are two purposes to this agenda item. One is to confirm, confirm date and time for our next meeting. And the other is to just talk a little bit about where we left off, what we were able to get accomplished, which as I look through the minutes and what we've done in the last couple of months, it looks like, you know, we have made some progress. The pre-treatment, the hostess house, uh, the Campbell Park improvements. We spent time talking on July 7th about the budget and historic colored school and, uh, you know, our organizational structure. So in retrospect, you know, that might, might be a blur to, to y'all now, and it certainly was until I reviewed the minutes again, but, but I think it was a very productive session and we'd want to continue that, really with the need to now include the comprehensive plan in this. But we would also call your attention to some things that we did not get a chance to do. Reviewing the council surveys where you gave us input on terms of your perception of certain city services. We would want to use those as a, a tool to help define your priorities. In terms of a meeting, a date and time, December 8th was the date that was talked about previously. We also, in deference to Councilman, Councilmember Keeney, would want to check that starting time so that maybe she could come after work. So maybe starting at 4:00 PM and, and working hard for three hours. I think after three hours, it becomes not as productive as we'd like it to be. But if we need to pick up in another month, then we can certainly pick that up as well in terms of continuation. But I'd, I'd be interested to hear Council's thoughts on, on that date and time as well as kind of keeping it somewhat productive and not, not stretching it out too long.
I think we're all good with it.
I, I do have one thing. Would, before the meeting, would you stick our, in our boxes, the, uh, the outline of what you're proposing to go over?
Absolutely, yeah.
As well as a project status update?
You bet. Yep. And I think we'll certainly start putting together the agenda based on what we hear from you tonight, as well as where we think we left off. We know that the comprehensive plan is going to take a, a chunk of that. And then we'll be happy to, to package up the, the projects and the current status as well.
Yeah, and if Becky could just send out a email when all that's in our boxes, we'll...
You bet. Give us till after Thanksgiving, but...
Sure.
But not much after that. We'll get it to... Any other questions from Council?
Everybody's good, I think. Thanks, Finley.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is discussion regarding the fire department incident reporting and billing. Chief Smith?
Good evening again. This is on the docket mainly because of the fact that we were notified by Fire Recovery USA. And this is a company that does third-party billing for the fire department. Many insurance companies are refusing to pay invoices for fire response to incidents such as motor vehicle accidents in cases where the insurer does not bill directly. One of the nation's largest insurance carriers has stated that they will not pay more than $250 per incident on the most common type. Typically, the cost that is billed for this is $600. These companies are basically denying the request for payment based on the fact that the insurer is not being billed directly. The Lampaces Fire Department does recover around $7,000 a year for these types of responses. And Lampaces Fire Department requests guidance on whether to continue, or whether to begin billing individuals for services provided on these incidents. And really the discussion on this is, the backstory on this is, we, we don't bill every time that we go out to a motor vehicle accident. Uh, if it's just a straightforward accident, we're not sending them any type of a bill whatsoever. And this was put in place prior to my arrival. Uh, when we have to do things that are beyond just the standard thing, if we have to clean up and put down some type of absorbent or, uh, some transmission fluid or brake fluid or stuff like that, then, then we usually send the bill to the insurance company. Same thing if, if we have extended operations out there due to extrication or something like that, that is when they are sent a bill by this third-party provider here. And that bill is always, it always goes to the information that we collect from them at the scene as far as who is your insurance with and everything like that. So nobody that ever passes through or that lives here in Lampaces ever receives a bill from the Lampaces Fire Department. It's sent directly to their insurance company. So what they're telling us is, is insurance companies, because we're not billing the insurer directly, they're not going to pay. We need to start sending these bills to the insured and have them pass that up to them.
So let me just clarify that, because I was confused. If you do bill the customer, the person who's had the accident, if you bill them and they can pass it on to their insurance company, is that insurance company likely to pay?
Uh, according to what we're being told by, by the people that do our billing, that is the biggest hang-up with the insurance company, is that they're never billing the insured. They're just billing them directly. I don't, I don't, I don't know if that means that they're going to be more willing to pay. We don't, we honestly, we don't do this enough because we only bill for those extended operations.
Right.
So I, I don't know that this is necessarily dealing with us per se or the majority of fire departments that do this. And the reason that we use this company, uh, the, the emergency reporting software that we use, it ties in and we can ship this directly to this company. They take out of that, they know what the bill is and they send it based off of the insurance information, the time, the manpower, the things that we did. They package up this bill and they send it to State Farm or Allstate or Farmers Bureau or whoever that is. But because it's not going to the insured, they're saying that you have not sent a bill for them and given them an opportunity to pay. They have not passed it on to us. I, I don't know how the, the behind the scenes works on that, but what they're, what this company is telling us is, is that we will start billing the insured, then we will have more of a chance of recovering this. We've never sent a bill to anybody that's, you know, individually like that. It's always being sent to the insurance company. And the reason we brought it up is because we know that, hey, this is going to be the talk of the town if we start sending out bills to people.
Well, I have a question...
Well, I have a question, because, you know, my son was involved in a really bad accident where he was extracted, and it took a long time. We never saw anything from anybody about this being billed. And is there any way to, like, bill the insurance company and, like, send a copy to the insured so that they know that that's happening? Where, because the insured's not going to pay it. It needs to be the insurance company that pays it. And so, as long as the insured is aware of it, or if it's like, you know, like a double, like, they send it to the insured and they send it to the insurance company, then the insurance company should pay, because they're just trying to get out of it.
I'm not sure what the motive of either is. The language that they sent us in this notification was, is that they, the insurance companies are saying that they are not going to pay, because their insured was never notified of this bill. They were never billed, I guess, and given the opportunity to pay, or to forward it on to the insurance company.
Well, that's why I think it needs to be sent to both, because it's the insurance company's responsibility, not necessarily the person that's buying the insurance. You buy the insurance, because they're supposed to take care of you after that. And if they haven't met deductibles or whatever, if both are billed, then everybody knows what's going on, and there's no reason that that insurance company shouldn't pay, in my opinion.
I would agree with you. I know as far as different options, if we can, if we decide to pursue this, what can we direct, you know, the company that does the third-party billing? Do we, can we do something specific that says, hey, please, you know, pass this information along to your insurance company? I think most of us would agree that if you're involved in an accident that requires KDN EMS and the fire department to respond, you've probably met your deductible, just by the virtue of that. So, if we had that language in there, if we get to do that, if we can personalize it for the Lampasses Fire Department and say, please pass this insurance, you know, pass this along to your insurance company, we'd appreciate that. We're good with that, if that's what y'all decide to do. We want to do whatever, and, I mean, I've spoken to Yvonne about this, as far as the amount that we collect, and, you know, we do count on that being part of the budget and everything. I know many cities go way beyond what we do, as far as every time that they go out on any type of an incident, they're going to send you a bill for that. If we want to make this some type of a real revenue generating opportunity, we can certainly do that. We just need the guidance from y'all as far as that, because the majority of the times, whenever you're going to have a wreck or an incident of something like this, you are the ones that are going to hear back from the individuals as far as, hey, when did we start this? Why does it cost so much? Those types of things. More than likely, they're not going to contact me at the fire department. They're going to contact you, and we felt like y'all should be the ones that have the opportunity to make this decision as far as, hey, I'm going to have to deal with a lot of angry people.
Thank you for that.
Well, I'm not putting it off on you, I assure you.
Chief, how much cleanup is there at a petroleum incident, where you have gasoline spillage or oil? Or do you all get involved in that totally with washing it down and all that stuff?
Yes. Now, if it's something major, if it's a reportable quantity, that it's a truly hazmat situation, we would contact the company that would come out, and they would mitigate that incident, and they would work with the insured, they would work with the trucking companies, the easiest one to go with. And they all have insurance on that, and that gets into thousands and thousands of dollars. We're not sending any bills like that, because we identify that, we notify them, and it goes to that. But we do have, there are incidents in Lampasses County, not just in Lampasses, where north of the county or south, you know, we're going to respond to that. And we've had an incident since my arrival here, two years ago, where we had two eighteen-wheelers collide on the road, and one of them went down into the creek, and extrication and stuff like that. So, I mean, there are major incidents here, and the billing of that and the manpower that it takes to be there, it does help us recover those costs that we continue to talk about. Hey, costs continue to escalate, and it's not only here in the city, but it's also out in the county. So, whenever we can collect something as far as that help us with the overhead on that, we see that as an advantage, and we would like to help offset those costs.
Only just a question, but do we turn ourselves into a collection agency to some degree with something like this, if we were to go that route?
I can add something to that. In the discussion that we've had with the staff, you know, Chief Harris brought up the point that this company does this for a percentage of what we bill. And this company is who is in contact with the insured, and they are the ones that continue to negotiate with the insurance companies along with that. That's why they earn that 20% of the money, or 10% of the money, or whatever in that. And so, it really, it doesn't give us absolution in it, but it does kind of take us out of the fact that we're not the ones that are calling them up going, oh, you've got to pay, or anything like that. To my knowledge, I've not ever, I've never been contacted by anybody in the short time that I've been here. I don't think any of y'all have either, as far as, hey, I got a bill from the fire department, and, or a collection agency is calling me and harassing me about not paying this. So, I would say that we're not in the debt collection business.
Okay. But you said other municipalities, they go after the collections on that? Is that how they, most of them handle it?
Well, I don't know if they go after collections necessarily. I can tell you as far as a lot of experience with EMS billing, they're always going to try to bill and recover on that. So, if you took Barnett, or any municipal, municipality around here that runs an EMS service, they usually collect somewhere around, I don't know, if it's a, if it's a public entity, it's going to be around 40% of what the costs are on that. And once they send you a bill, more than likely, they'll give you a phone call, and other than that, that's about it. They're very willing to work with people as far as, hey, if you'll pay us $10 a month, we're good with that. Like I said, I don't think the city of Lampasses, or any city, wants to get into any type of debt resolution or anything like that, you know? But you are trying to offset some of the cost of your operations on that. And I know that we collect taxes to help fund this and everything, but, you know, there are the, and that's why we do what we do. We have the cases where we do spend a little bit of extra time out there. It's on a roadway, you know, it's taking up a significant amount of time for us out there, which is man-hours, which, you know, the engine setting out there and that type of stuff, so...
Well, is there, there should be some sort of incentive for that person, that, or that billing agency to go after those insurance companies to pay that? They're, they don't get their 20% either, if we don't pay.
Exactly, exactly.
So, I would think there would be a little more incentive to them.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with, you know, copying the person that was involved, along with the insurance. But I think we need to continue through the third party.
Yeah. And I think that's why, you know, the information that the third party brought to us was, hey, we need your help. We're trying to collect funds for you. We're having a difficult time collecting these funds, because these providers are saying that, well, you've never sent our insurer to bill. So, could you start sending them a bill, so that we can begin going back to the insurance companies and collecting that money from them?
So, it sounds like we might need to do some education, some PR to get the word out?
Yeah, and I'm a big believer in that. I mean, public education is everything that I do, from, you know, safety and all that along the way. But, you know, there are operating costs within the fire department, within the police department, everything else. We're not trying to generate revenue, we're trying to recuperate costs.
Right.
We're trying to, we're trying to make sure that those costs that are incurred by individuals that drive through this town, or live in this town, or live in this county, you know, when they become part of the costs that we incur through that, I think that they should be, if they have insurance, and insurance covers that type of a cost with that, especially when it gets into, you know, several hundred dollars, several thousand dollars, you know, those do add up.
Maybe we need to look at some public education, and then revisit this after the first year sometime this spring.
Are you just looking to us for some of that direction?
Yes, that is what, and as far as, if you want to put together a plan, as far as, hey, we're going to start doing this on this date, we're more than, more than happy to get with all the different social media, get with radio stations, radiograms, Lampasses Dispatch, and get this information out as far as what we are doing, what we're trying to accomplish, and make sure that everybody knows that this is nothing aimed at any one individual or anything like that. It's just simply, hey, we're trying to get it to where our company that says, hey, if you'll bill the individual, they'll pass that on to the insurance company, and they would be more willing to pay.
I would rather bill both, or bill the insurance company with a copy going to the individual. I don't want to bill the individual. I think it needs to be the insurance company that takes care of it, and I think they're trying to weasel their way out of it. And if we bill both, or have a copy go to the individual, then the insurance company can't say they don't know about it.
Yeah. I know that as far as medical billing, depending on what you have, if you have any procedure done, you're going to have to go do some pre-op testing and stuff like that, and you're going to gather a bunch of receipts, and you're going to send those to your insurance company. And they're going to get paid. And then there's a certain amount of billing at whatever facility that you have that procedure done, they're going to automatically bill that. So, I think it's really a collective effort between the insured and the insurance company to make sure that all the IOUs out there get into one spot, and then it gets handled. So, I think that, you know, both of them being notified of that, I think is a great idea.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item seven is discussion regarding the wayfinding signage.
I did leave some stuff at your dais that I'll talk about afterwards. And just to kind of give you a little bit of feedback, or history, I should say, but the wayfinding program has been something that has been tossed around through the city's staff, businesses, citizens for many, many years. And we've kind of delved in it in different directions, and kind of looked at it from a different perspective. Right now, we're kind of getting a little more involved with trying to see what the needs are. And as I go through my presentation, I'll kind of enlighten to you, more of a phased project is kind of what my goal is. In our comp plan, this is more of a three- to ten-year term, is what they actually did as an objective, for us to kind of reach that goal. And that's probably going to be about right, as far as for us to do it right, and make sure that we make good business sense, and make sure we're doing what's best for not only our staff, and our citizens, and our business owners, but just for the city as a whole. So, this is something that I kind of put together, just to kind of give you some highlights of what's been going on. But this is one thing that I felt wayfinding kind of makes the most sense, is just helping people in motion navigate a new place. And I kind of thought that was kind of a very unique to our goals and what we're trying, our objective is with wayfinding. So, of course, our goals are to increase awareness of Lampasses, to promote business and historical landmarks, provide a positive experience for visitors and for locals, increase merchant revenues and foot traffic, and then to take advantage of the Highway 190, 183, and 281. These are some sign examples. As I go through these, these are just ideas and just some examples that other cities have done. The estimated cost for these that I've gotten from a contractor ranges from anywhere between $3,000 and $5,000. It's going to depend on your material, your size, how many, how much information you want put on there. And then, of course, the contractor that you choose.
Is that each sign? Three to 5,000 per sign?
Correct, and one sign. And that's just these types of signs. There's multiple different types of wayfinding signs.
Just curious, who was your contractor you talked to?
I haven't talked to anybody local. I've gone through a contractor that I've dealt with that did a presentation for us previously, that I'll discuss here as we get further. Anyway, we'll touch on that in a minute. So, the strategy is to identify quick wins. Like I stated before, this is more going to be, in my mind, a phased project, based on the associated costs and types of signs that we do. Resources, of course, the resources, we want to use, you know, local contractors, we want to use anybody from other municipalities that might be able to provide some guidance for us, you know, what they've learned, you know, anything that they can provide to us to help it make a better process for us. I have reached out to some local contractors just to see, and kind of get a feel for them if I'm going down the right path. Because one thing I do want to make clear is that they are all aware that I have to go through an RFP process, so they know that I am just seeking feedback, and I've been very open with them, letting them know, because I don't want them to think that I'm going to, you know, go into contract with them, because I want them to know that I'm just trying to get some feel of where we can start, and to make it very a positive experience for everybody. And then something else, as far as like the sign placement, I've even reached out to Facility Solutions Group, which is the one that did the actual presentation before for us, for our CIP committee, to see if he'd be willing to come to town, so that I can kind of walk him through of where all of our landmarks are, where all of our restaurants are, our entertainment, our downtown, our highways, just to kind of give me an idea of what he thinks would be the biggest bang for our buck. Because if, there's some cities that have spent a lot of money on wayfinding signage, and I don't know that what their successes have been, but I want to be able to measure ours. I want to know that by putting this sign on this corner, we're getting this much more foot traffic, or the businesses can see a difference. I want to be able to do some type of lessons learned, and here's our successes, and here's what we found out, and we're going to do a duplicate sign somewhere else, or something different, because it didn't work. And then, as far as a specific or generic, so, like with the signs yourself, you can make them as generic as you want, meaning just a restaurant or entertainment, or you can be real specific and put, you know, Eve's Cafe, or something that's more driven towards that one restaurant. However, we have to stay on top of that and change those out as businesses change, or we add, you know, new businesses. So, we want to be real mindful about how we do our signage, to make sure we're fair to everybody. And then changeable is another good idea, like seasonal. So, like if, you know, we want to bring people downtown at a certain type of the year, we can maybe change our signage and put Historic Downtown as the number one item on this changeable board that we have, or the signage that we have. So, there's different ways that we can promote it and do it to where it's beneficial year round, and not just stuck with the sign that's, that's what we did at the time, and we just have to kind of deal with it.
Quick question.
Yeah.
On the, on the cost, can you do, would you possibly look at doing a cost share with a business?
Um, I don't know about that yet at this point, because, like I said, the driver of this is to make it more generic, to get them to those locations. Like with the city facilities, of course, it would be a library, or, you know, or city hall, police department, fire department. But when it comes to a restaurant, there was no way we'd be able to put all the restaurants' names, because then, of course, you have a busy sign, and may not get the actual result that we're looking for. But if we could kind of put it at a different location to where maybe it was driven towards a certain area or something, then I'm sure there could be some cost sharing involved. But at this point, this is just a very high level.
Okay, okay.
Does that make sense?
Kind of does, kind of does.
Okay. Did you have something to add? Okay. So, these were some sign mockups that I was just kind of playing around with, kind of showing some ideas. So, like placement on Fourth and 190, which will be right there at SEFCO, basically. You know, Historic Downtown, Lampasses County Museum, Lampasses County Courthouse, giving them an arrow to show them where all those facilities are. And then kind of have it more shopping, dining, entertainment, the pool, library, Campbell Park, police department, et cetera, just to get them down Fourth Street, just to get them down that area. And then, once you get, say, to Western, you have another sign that takes you to the pool, or takes you to the museum, or takes you somewhere else. So, it's kind of like a pattern or a domino effect, that you get one big sign, and then they start getting smaller as you get more closer to those locations. This would be a good also opportunity to put on Western and Central Side Expressway as well, because they'll take you to the same place, take you downtown, take you to the museum, take you to the pool. So, you can use the same type of sign at different locations to get you in that general direction. So, the other one that I had, that was a placement on Key Avenue, which is right there at the intersection, would be like to take us to the hostess house, take us to dining, which would later take us to Alfredo's, or to Peters, down that direction. Or take us the other direction, and take us to the pool, or the library, or Campbell Park, just to get them a directional area of town, and just to kind of show them what's that direction, where it's going to lead you to. And like I said, these are not professionally done, these are just ideas I had, just something I put on paper. So, this is some feedback that I got from FSG when I was asking about materials, because, of course, we want something that is weathered, something that'll last, something that'll look good, but also something that we can actually use. And like I said, if we wanted to choose to use changeable signs, or removable signs, or things that we can play with throughout the year to make it more advantageous to us, we want to be able to use that as a marketing tool as well. So, like the sign panels, the graphics, this is the ideas that they had, and the cut vinyl, reflective diamond grade, 3M for Text Dot. And that's one thing that is going to be included in the RFP, is that they're going to reach out to Text Dot for me. They're going to do the installation, the creation, they're going to do whatever I need them to do, to make sure that I'm meeting Text Dot regulations, we're getting what we want as a sign, we want the placement as we want, and be able to do it, phasing it to where it's not something that, we're going to get all these signs out there and not really be able to tell what's working and what's not. So, that's kind of part of the, my vision of the request for professional services that I want to put together to show them what we're looking for as a city. And he also recommended... And he also recommended the removal slots and panels, which is what I talked to him about as well. He said it is doable, and the logo, like you have a contour at the top of the signage to make it more stand out, you know? And then, of course, our consideration just overall is the sign material and maintenance, the branding and consistency. And that's something with the consistency and the branding you'll see in our city signs that I did in that presentation at your dais I did a couple of years ago, just to show you all the different city signs that we already have out there right now. And none of them are very consistent, and none of them really show our brand. They don't really show that it's ours, you know, there's nothing unique about them. And then, of course, the Text Dot regulations, and I want to be able to track successes. Like I said, I think that's really important. Um, and then have like a phased budget funding to where we have a signed master plan, so we know that, you know, this year, we're gonna focus on these areas, next year, we'll focus on this area, next year, we'll focus on, and so on. And then, of course, community involvement is important, because we want to make sure that we're getting them what they need. So you know of my, you know, the museum committee, you know, we've talked several times about getting them some um more visibility to where the museum is located or downtown in general. Um, and then, of course, the stakeholder satisfaction, make sure the business owners are seeing a difference. You know, they can actually tell, and they can actually be tangible about it and say, yes, this is working, thank you so much. This is where it needed to go all along, and or this color works, or this color doesn't work, or just something, just to get a feedback. And then, of course, my resources, like I said, I went through other municipalities, just kind of generally seeing what they've gone through and how their processes have been and the costs that they've spent. Um, some local sign contractors, I have reached out to Sign Designs and TV Signs to get their feedback and if they've ever, um, worked with wayfinding signage, to see if they had any recommendations. Um, and then Facility Solutions Group, this is the actual wayfinding sign um contractor that actually did a presentation for us through CIP. And we found this company through um a symposium that I attended, um, kind of looking through different wayfinding signages, and it came out to where like hot funds is something that we can use for wayfinding signs as well. And so this group was one that they recommended we reach out to just for information. And that's the one that came to the CIP group and showed them the presentation that I presented to y'all a few months ago as well. So Greg has been a really great resource for me, even though he understands that he's not committed by any means, but he has been very helpful. And then, of course, the request for proposals, like I said, I think it needs to have the purpose identified, the expectations and timing. Of course, it should know exactly what we want, and that's something coming from y'all of how the direction is and what you, how you want me to proceed. And then, of course, next step, council guidance, areas of focus, expectations, and timelines. That's it. And that is all that I have for you this evening. Like I said, on your dais, you have the city signs, that's every city sign that we have. Like I said, I did that like two years ago, so it might be a little outdated, but I I don't think anything's changed. And then, the other one is the actual mockup of all the signs that I kind of put together, and it's two-sided. And these, like I said, these are just ideas, they're not inclusive of everything, it's just kind of things I just came up with.
Do you kind of have an estimate of kind of what it would cost somewhat ballpark or? I mean, it kind of depends on how many.
Yeah. A lot of, um, the municipalities have done it to where they've done billboards, and they've done their gateway signs, and they've done the actual wayfinding signs. And so they've made it a huge project, and you know, they've spent millions and millions on it. And that's why I don't, I mean, like I said, this is completely my opinion, nobody else's. I just felt like if we did it as a phased project, I'd be able to really I think it's important to know where our successes are. I don't want to go out and get a bunch of signs and put them on the street corners and nobody sees it, or it's too busy, or it's not looked at. You know, because these are important to us, you know, and I want to make sure that we do it right and it's methodical and we think it through.
Now, from from your studying on here, where would you, where would you see a starting place on this? Right here on placement, Fourth and and one ninetieth, is that, is that what this is?
Those are ideas, yes. I think, like I said, I think it needs to be a domino effect to get you to the the biggest place first. So like, of course, on one ninety would be a huge benefit for us, you know, one eighty-three, two eighty-one, wherever we have the biggest amount of traffic coming through, that's where exactly we want to hone in on. Now, whether we put one on each side, that's gonna be something that the experts are gonna have to tell me what's more beneficial. You know, do we need one on both sides of Key Avenue? Do we need one just at one location? You know, just like it, do we need one at all four corners on, you know, the intersection of, you know, Key? I think it'll be too busy to me personally, or the colors are gonna be important, because we want to make sure that it gets their attention and it's not gonna be a nuisance or eyesore or, you know, an off, something that, you know, is gonna be, you know, not, like I said, I want it to be used, I want it to be tangible. I want them to be able to say, hey, I love that sign on the corner, and it brought me right to you, and that's what I'm looking for. And it's gonna take some work.
One of the things I would like to see incorporated in our proposal are our signage that we're putting on our vehicles. Uh, the the city logo that we did, uh, look very sharp on the vehicles that I've seen. And if we can incorporate that in into our program uh of some sort, I think that would also be included in our branding type.
Absolutely, and that's on the top of this. This is our newest logo up here at the top of City of Lampasses, and that's kind of my vision as well. I want to make sure they're all color coordinated, they all branded look alike, they all show the same message. And that's kind of what I was kind of hoping for.
And I think we need to stay in in general terms as well. I don't think we need to uh focus with any particular entity.
Right, I agree.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Next uh, next item is discussion regarding any item on the regular agenda. Anyone have any questions? Do we want to continue on into the next phase or take a break?
Yeah, uh, Finley, is this letter on your uh city manager's report from the appraisal district?
It is.
I'm good.
Okay, the question was, do we want to take a break or just continue on?
I'm good.
Okay, so we're going to adjourn the workshop session. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, we're gonna call the regular session to order, Chief Bailey.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, during this season of thanks, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you for your everlasting, ever-enduring love. Father, a lot of people will be traveling this week, please see that they make it to their destination and back safely. Tonight, we ask that you watch over our meeting and guide us and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. We do have a presentation, a service recognition for Scott Haverly, who is not here. So congratulations, Scott. One point one, public hearing. Citizen comments, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. The city council may not deliberate on items presented under this agenda item. Thank you. One point two, citizen comments, any citizen who desires to address the city council on a matter that is included may do so at this time. Anyone? One point three, we have a public hearing to receive citizen comments regarding a request to close, abandon, vacate, and convey the alley in Block seventy-six, Lampasses Springs Company, First Edition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the applicants were Terrence Roberts and Tom Lancaster, and they liked consideration to close the alley in Block seventy-six. Um, as shown in your actual packets, you'll see the actual um plaque for that area. Um, Mr. Roberts actually lives at two hundred North Spring Street, and Summer sits right behind that property, and there's three lots over there that they just had to replatted. So the entire block of seventy-six is owned by Roberts and Lancaster conclusively. Um, I did mail out eighteen letters to property owners within a two or three radius. I have not received none in return, whether they're for or against the abandonment. Um, the other. Um, I did verify that there's no water, sewer, or electric in the alley, so none of our utilities would be affected. Um, on Avenue A and Avenue B is where the sewer actually is. So when those lots do get developed on the backside on Summer, then they will have an easement for us as far as the extension of services at that time. Um, you'll also see that the whole reason for Mr. Roberts to request us to abandon this alley is that the house that was built on two hundred North Summer was actually pretty close to the alley. There was not really a setback that was done many, many years ago. And so it's gonna have him have more access to be able to get to his garage and his area at the back of his home and then allow room for the um alleyway, if you will, or not alley, but the easement for utilities for those back homes that will be developed at another time.
Does council have any comments or questions?
So he just wants us to give up the alley so he can get to his garage easier?
Well, there's not, there's not a purpose of the alley, there's no utilities in it for us, and his house is already encroaching on part of the alley. Um, it's really close to that alley, there is no setback there. It's not a, it's, he owns the entire block. So just to make it easier, and then, once he develops those three lots behind, he'll have the actual easement back there for utility. So we'll still have what we need as a city, and it's not a public thoroughfare. There is no traffic going through that alley by any means.
Is this the old Terry House?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment? Anyone else?
So he's wanting to develop half of the the block, is that what you're saying?
If you look at the plaques in there, if, can you get the next one on there, Monica? So we had already redone this plat, there were four lots right behind him, so to the left of the alley on this picture. We've replatted this to three lots, and those are vacant right now. And that's what he will, actually, Mr. Lancaster will actually develop these three, and there'll be homes on it. So when those homes are built, we'll have our utility easement that we need for a sewer, um, which will go on the other side of where that alley is right now, because the alley doesn't serve a purpose, because, like I said, it's too close to his house anyway, and there are no utilities in the alley today.
We have someone in the back who wishes to speak?
Okay, so you're good?
Becky, is it, the the three lots that are gonna be developed, is that on the backside of where the driveway is?
Yes.
So the driveway will be relocated, I guess?
No, 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 the the alley, where the alley is, is where the back of his house is. So where the alley is this this way is where all the other um homes will be. So the the driveway will not be affected for the new development, because they'll come in off of Summer.
I got you.
That's where their, those houses will be developed off of Summer.
Okay.
And where his house comes off of Spring, it's just that he's got a back drive to his garage.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Becky. Two point one, discussion and possible actions concerning approval of minutes of the regular meeting held on November eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I didn't see any corrections, recommend approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Three point zero, the consent agenda, discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of an ordinance to amend Appendix A, B schedule in the City of Lampasses Code of Ordinances by adding fees related to the Wi-Fi hotspot device lending.
Recommend approval.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have the Police Department for a monthly report.
Mayor Council, thank you. Um, before we get started tonight, I brought with me four outstanding employees of the city and of the Police Department, Assistant Chief Jody Cummings, Lieutenant Charlie Boswell, Lieutenant Chuck Montgomery, and Communication Supervisor Records Kelly Sangwinett that will help with this report. Mayor Council, um, as Chief of Police, it's been my privilege to serve this community and um with the department members and with the volunteers that we have. We have sixteen full-time volunteers that have joined our department from the Citizens Police Academy alumni. This year thus far, they have attended thirty-one events, also have had their own meetings and other duties that they attend to. They have added four hundred and ninety hours of service to our community. Since inception in two thousand seventeen, they provided eighteen hundred hours of service to our community. There are six charter members that are still part of the organization of the alumni, and that is Regina Morgan, Joe and Ann Luser, Becky Neville, and Bill Nowher. Your board is Regina Morgan, President, Vice President is Paul Maselli, and your Secretary Treasurer is Becky Neville. They're always where we want to be, but we can't be because we're needed somewhere else. They are a huge benefit to us. We want to thank our community. Uh, sometimes we feel like we're their, you know, they're our biggest fans. Um, we um feel lots of confident, I mean, lots of support and confidence from our community. In two thousand twenty-one, we've had some unique challenges. Some of those challenges deal with the health and safety, political uh issues that go on. We've dealt with coronavirus, we've dealt with border security issues, immigration issues, political issues. Uh, we've been very close to Austin where they're, where they tried to defund the Police Department. There have been unemployment issues, and those unemployment issues have led to openings in other departments with jobs that have better salaries, so we've had issues with employees leaving us. Our economy as a whole has skyrocketed. Um, just wait until you go buy your Thanksgiving dinner and you'll see what's going on with that. Used to be a lot cheaper to live in the country, it's not cheaper anymore. Uh, we're seeing, like I say, food prices go up, a lot of that is due to all of these issues. Uh, we've had coronavirus issues, weather, shortages in labor that also cause all of that. Um, and all of that causes healthcare issues and mental health issues that we have to deal with frequently, and those challenge us when we're dealing with people that are having those issues. And then, we also deal with um the issues of our of law enforcement deaths that are occurring around the country. Um, we've had changes in laws in this past year. Coronavirus stopped a lot of laws for a while and then brought them back, brought them back different for quite a few of them. Um, alcohol to go. Before cor- the coronavirus, we would have never thought that you could get alcohol to go, but you can get alcohol to go from a restaurant now. And then also legislature with marijuana, with Delta eight, legal, illegal, legal. Um, we have, we've dealt with changes in incarceration with rules with the jails. Um, you know, they have overpopulation issues, they deal with the virus, the coronavirus, and mental and physical assessments. And they also have lack of personnel issues. All of this cost us time, and then we have to stop and make arrangements uh for what we're going to do with this person. We also have had changes in policing in general. Um, one thing that we've been seeing over the past um while is that many people believe that there's racism in law enforcement. We don't have a place for racism in law enforcement. You know, we we check ourselves, we check our own DNA, and uh we just, there's no place for it. If you live in America, more than likely, you're very mixed race or or your ethnicity is mixed to some degree. We follow the protections uh provided to all citizens through the Constitution, regardless of someone's race, their ethnicity, their religion, non-religion, sex, sexual orientation. We respect and we earn respect for. We respect and we earn respect from our community. There's also a belief that we just randomly, for no reason, stop people, and that we frisk people and we search people. We follow the laws according to the laws. We also, with the equipment that you provide us, we have body cameras to record that. We have in-car cameras to record that. We document it. And then we go beyond that, and further, we review our recordings. Our command staff from sergeant up reviews, randomly reviews the recordings that we, we have. So, you know, there's a lot of negativity in the media about law enforcement. No one likes the enforcer, but everyone loves the protector. We value our relationship with our community, and we vow to continue to serve as servant leaders with dignity and respect to all. We conducted two hundred and thirty-seven public relation contacts this past year, and we like to start at a very young age with that. We thought McGruff was very appropriate for that, because we use McGruff a lot in this scenario. When I say we, I'm talking about all members of our Police Department. We have twenty-one sworn personnel, two firefighters that work with us also, that are sworn law enforcement officers. And then we have eleven non-sworn, for a total of thirty-two employees, two firefighters, and currently sixteen volunteers. Every member of our department, every member of Lampasses Police Department, provides countless law enforcement services to our community. One of the things that we do is we address qualities of life. We address concerns. We find solutions when someone has a problem, so that everyone in our community, community can have the best quality of life while living in our community.
Crowd the chief over here. So far this year, roughly eleven months almost completed, we've had nine thousand three hundred and fifty-nine calls for services to the Police Department. And those vary from very serious to extremely minor. We have under, a hundred and eighty-five more at this point in the month than we did in two thousand twenty, and we can speculate why or why not. Probably COVID slowed us a lot last year, and we're starting to pick up the pace and get back to whatever normal is for today's times. We're currently averaging about nine hundred and thirty-five calls for service per month.
We deal with crashes in our community. We have a lot of traffic throughout. As you know, our roadways, our highways here, we have a lot of traffic. We have a lot of crashes in Lampasses. So we analyze and we try to figure out what is going on. You help us with that a lot of times with the ordinances that we bring to you, asking you to pass so that we can make our roadway safer with that.
Specifically on crashes, we've seen a increased forty-one more crashes this year than we did year-to-date last year. We classify those crashes in minor and major crashes. Major crashes is a crash with any type of injury. So specifically, we've had two hundred and thirty-eight minor crashes and fifteen major crashes year-to-date.
On our nine, nine-one-one calls, our medical, and then just crises, our dispatchers are usually the first person that someone talks to for assistance. And from that, our officers may be first on the scene. We've worked very well with our fire department. We work very well with KDN ambulance and other ambulances that come into our community, and we work well with other departments as well.
So far, twenty twenty-one dispatches answered thirty-one thousand two hundred and nine telephone calls. I suspect that number to be way higher because of the way our recording system works. If you don't actually hang it up, it doesn't count the next call. It's all considered one call. So I suspect that to be much higher. We've handled two thousand four hundred and forty-nine nine-one-one calls. We're averaging two hundred and forty-five nine-one-one calls and text every month.
One of the things that I'm really proud to say that we have done very well and made an emphasis on training our officers is with mental health. We're seeing a huge increase in the amount of mental health type calls we did. Specifically, we've handled fifty-one persons in crisis this year-to-date and have done fifteen emergency detentions. An emergency detention is, is a, where a police officer forces someone into a medical facility, typically because they're imminent danger to themselves or others. You know, our Police Department has a culture of requiring a strong work ethic from all our employees. I'm proud to say that we provide services for our community that not a lot of police departments provide. Specifically, we still unlock cars. We do standbys with our banks while they deposit their money. We do motorist assist. We provide funeral escorts. These are great ways that we're able to interact with our community outside of the traditional law enforcement enforcement type role.
One of the things that we've taken from the comprehensive plan and from you is listening to you talk about branding. And for us, branding is not a symbol. It's not a little cliche quote or anything like that. For us, branding is, we serve as servant leaders, and we want our community to know that. We try to set excellent examples for other officers and for other departments. The last few decades, we've seen branding like go from products and go from other things to public image. And that's what we try to portray is a good public image. We try to create emotional ties with our community. We do that by becoming involved in our community. We provide a service to our community, safety and security, and we also have that personal side with our community. When people respect and trust their law enforcement agency, they stay in that community. If they don't, then just like they go looking for better school districts, better, better jobs, they leave. So if we can get them to stay in our community, to feel safe, to feel secure, we feel like we're doing our job. We also do branding within our department. Since becoming chief, we've done many changes within the department. Not because I became chief, but because this team of people back here worked very hard to do that. We are working to make our department very appealing, although you see people leaving. Doesn't have anything to do with our appeal. We do things that are family-oriented. We don't just say we're family-oriented. A lot of departments will say we're family-oriented, and then they don't let you take off to go to a ballgame, or they don't let you walk through an area while your child's at a play at school. We do those things. It's a benefit to us. It's a benefit to our community to have the officers in that area. You know, we want people when, when they leave, when they retire, to say, "I worked for the Lampasses Police Department. It was one of the best agencies in the state of Texas. The citizens provide you support. Your city manager is the best there can be. You couldn't ask for a better city council. It's why I stayed there so long, and we want you to come and be a part of that, too." That's what we talk about with branding. We want people to know that we're professional. We want people to know that we're personal, and we want them to know that we're very competent to do our job. And we do our jobs very well. We're also a family at the Police Department. A little dysfunctional at times, but we are still a family. We take our role as protector very, very serious. Enforcement is not fun at times, but it's essential. It's essential to keep our community safe, and it's essential to keep chaos from coming to our streets and coming to our, our homes and into our communities. Our department is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, holidays, weekends, birthdays, anniversaries. It doesn't matter. Whatever we have to do, we are going to do to keep our business going and to keep our business going well. Again, our business is protection and safety of our community.
Counsel to a chief's point, I'd like to give you some specific high-level stats to kind of show what we're out there doing. Year-to-date, we are at five thousand three hundred and seventy-eight self-initiated contacts. That's an increase of five hundred and eighty-three contacts from year-to-date last year. Written eight hundred and thirty-five citations and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four warnings. We've arrested four hundred and seventy-four, detained forty-nine juveniles. We filed thirty-seven DWI arrests and one hundred and twenty-three drug-related charges. We've served a hundred and one warrants. We'd expect that to be more, but due to the restrictions with COVID, we, the jail has limited what warrants they would accept this year, and those limitations, though they're loosening, they have not been removed. I'm talking specifically about Class E traffic warrants. We're unable to serve those right now.
However, we do make other arrangements with people to come into municipal court to take care of those. We're very fortunate. We have an outstanding team of criminal investigators. They not only work with prosecutor, they also work with a few defense attorneys as well.
So the numbers that Chuck, Lieutenant Montgomery gave you kind of indicates how busy we are. They keep us plenty busy. Year-to-date, thirteen hundred and twelve total cases reported. Four, one thousand four hundred and sixty-six of those cleared. Two hundred and seventy incidents reports were made. This total of three thousand and forty-eight cases that passed across Supervisor Investigator's desk. Of course, I review all reports. Supervisor reviews all reports, and our records clerk do as well. Of course, like Chief Bailey said, we follow up with prosecutors, testify in court, and there's just three of us. So me and two Sergeant Investigators, Sergeant Tim Ryan and Nick Roberts. As you know, Nick Roberts is gonna be leaving us. This is last week. He's also over our sex offender registrar.
He's not going far. Where did you even application? Go work out with the state and do an application, so we can just move in a little bit with that.
So all of those three thousand and forty-eight cases that hit their desk eventually hit my desk, where I process them for all the courts, prosecutors, municipal court. Some cases will go to both. Some cases will go to DPS, DIC. I mean, there's lots of places that these can go. And then I've also processed three hundred and twelve open records requests this year so far.
We work very closely with our victims, with our suspects, and also with the defendants. The best way to describe our code enforcement is we help retain our community appeal by enforcing land ordinances. Code enforcement is for the prevention, the detection, investigation, enforcement of laws relating to public nuisances.
Sergeant Tony Barrio is our code enforcement officer and one of our probably unsung heroes. He does a lot more than just code enforcement. So far to this date, though, he's done five hundred and nine code enforcement calls as of right now for the year. Again, probably down slightly from last year due to some COVID and some restrictions. That's eighty more than this time last year. Lots of follow-ups, so that's just the initial call. For instance, tall grass and abandoned property, he locates the owner, sends a certified letter, waits for the return to come back, updating his report as he goes. Maybe he actually gets someone to talk to. Now there's more phone calls, more letters. It's a very meticulous process, so at any point, he's got dozens and dozens of what seems like small cases, but very articulate in the information as he goes through them. So he also does a great job anytime during the day. If we have an emergency, we're shorthanded. He sees something not code enforcement-related. He jumps on it, helps us out all the time. Tony always strives for voluntary compliance. In comparison to the number of cases he actually works, very rarely does he actually have to file a charge, but he will. And about once a year, he'll actually have to go and get a search warrant to get onto a piece of property, just like any other criminal case, to gather more information to proceed forward if it's something that's really, really difficult or detrimental to the public safety and health, we have to go that far. So he's a good guy and does a lot of hard work that's behind the scenes that we never see.
And that's just if there's one owner. Sometimes there's a piece of property with twelve owners and we have to contact. He has to get in touch with all twelve owners of that, of that property. Animal control. Animal control officer Joe Schwartzser works Monday through Friday, seven AM to three PM. Because we are twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, Joe gets a little help from patrol. So Lieutenant Montgomery, patrol, they get to go out and answer animal calls when Joe's not there. And then sometimes when they get in a bind, we have to call our animal shelter techs and get them to come and help our animal shelter supervisor, Casey. Together, they answered one thousand six hundred and ninety-five animal calls, and we impacted five hundred and sixty-six animals. Starting January, Joe will start being very busy with registering for livestock, for the livestock ordinance, which by the way, we have received a lot of positive feedback from. Our Lampasses Animal Shelter Supervisor is Casey Schwartzser, and her team of two animal, uh, two animal shelter techs have taken in four hundred and forty-six dogs, one hundred and seventy-nine cats, and thirty-two other animals. The ratio for the city-county currently is about seventy percent county and forty percent city with animals. Little bit more than a hundred percent. The shelter is a city-maintained facility where the county pays for half of everything. They're a hundred and ten percent over there. Casey and her crew recently passed the, their state inspection with flying colors. The state asked to be able to continue to bring people to the shelter, to show them the shelter that we have in Lampasses, and show how well it is run and the efficiency of that shelter. They also asked for Casey to be allowed to continue to teach for the state at state conferences.
So this year, we updated our phone systems at the Police Department. We replaced a lot of phones that didn't work. Our quality of service has improved one hundred percent. We're not asking near as much, "Can you repeat that?" "I didn't hear that." There's not as much static on the lines. It's just a huge improvement.
I'd like to give you all a little bit of feedback on some of the capital projects that y'all have approved for us, and we appreciate it, your support. One is, the biggest one I believe, is the update of our radio system. We have all-new radios that have the most advanced technology in them. I can give you a, just a real quick success story from those radios. The other day, we were involved in a multi-jurisdictional pursuit into Burnet County. With that capability, we were able to speak clearly with our dispatcher all the way over in Burnet. That's something we wouldn't have been able to do on the old system. But even more importantly is the fact that with the push of a button at a comm center, they were able to patch in all involved agencies, which included Burnet County, Burnet PD, DPS, Marble Falls PD. We're all on the same channel, with the officer driving down the road, trying to focus on this pursuit, never having to touch his radio. So I mean, it's really cool. We thank y'all for that. We-
In the past, in the past, what would have happened? One dispatcher would have had the phone trying to call all those different agencies?
I mean, it worked great. It was just all of a sudden, everybody's there and we're working together, so thank y'all again. It's making our officers safer. We are implementing a CAD system, which is allowing our dispatch, digitizer dispatch logs. It's minimizing the amount of programs that the dispatcher has to log into to successfully do their job. It's allowing the officers to have twenty-two years of data and records that we've always had, but in-house, at the tip of their fingers while they out-drive around their cars. Again, it's convenient. It's efficient, but most importantly, it's making our officers safer. We've, with y'all's support, been able to purchase and update all our officers with the newest greatest body cameras, which in today's world is a necessity, and we're glad to have that. Our, to get a little quick rundown on our fleet, we, we manage twenty-four fleet vehicles for our department. It's important to note that one is an administrative vehicle. It's an old patrol vehicle that instead of sending to auction, we use to send dispatchers to training, have as a backup car. But we have twenty-three everyday working vehicles. Two of these vehicles, in our last budget, we asked for y'all to replace, and those are gonna replace a two thousand ten, two thousand eleven Ford Crown Victorias with high mileage. Just in, exiting, I'd like to say thank y'all very much for the opportunity to present this report. Thank you to the manager, counsel, mentioning the Chief Bailey. This will be her last one, I believe. Her retirement will be in March, and between what we-
And between what we've been working up to now and in the near future, she's been working very hard, making sure that all are ducks in a row, that we're all very aware of every aspect of her job, all of us, and that we're in a good position for the future. Thank y'all for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I want to say, I want to say thank you to you guys. I, I mean, you're just, I just, my hat's off to you. You've allowed me to go on some ride-alongs with some of your officers and seeing what you guys do. And, you know, my appreciation level is unbelievable of what you guys do. And you don't get paid enough, but I thank you.
We thank you very much. Thank you. These are the guys that do it all, right there.
I have one question, in regards to backup training for Kelly.
For Kelly?
Backup training for somebody when you decide to retire?
Well, you know Andy's retired, so I'm not planning on going anywhere because I can't be at home with him all the time. But Mary, Mary's been, I've kind of taken her under my wing, and she's, she's pretty much learning everything that I'm doing.
It's a good thing.
I've got two things.
Mary's training too. We kind of go down the lines.
That was one thing that wasn't covered in your report, is your backup training.
One of the things that we've stressed on these last few years is making sure that everyone is trained and knows a little bit about everything with that. And when Kelly says, "Mary, we have two-day shift dispatchers," and so they're trained a little bit on all those duties that she does as well.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Morris has a question as well, or a comment?
One comment, one question. Really, thank y'all. You know how much. I think y'all are awesome. Brag about every other jurisdiction I go to. I have the best PD. Second, what's going to happen to that 2010 Crown Vic?
Becky, we'll get that to, we'll ask her for it to be salvaged, and that'll go towards to Becky so that she can take care of that for us.
I just like to look cool with maybe some long horns on front.
Yes, sir.
Logo on it.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. Next item, routine matters. We have the city manager's operational report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just have a few quick items to report to you. This is also included in your packet in my memo. 281 South, we had utility staff meet with text dot planners this past week to discuss in greater detail some utility conflicts. We knew that we were going to have to move some electric at Naruna and 281. That is still somewhat up in the air, but we've also identified that we'll probably need to relocate an eight-inch line on the west side of 281 in the vicinity of Hancock Park. That's not, that's not terrible. We think we can simply kill that line out and then bore under 281 to get services to that line, to the facilities that are connected to that line. Additionally, and we'll probably tap Van to talk to you a little bit more on the next council meeting on the 13th of December. We've got about, we figure about 550 feet of eight-inch line on the south side of Omniss, over where the, in the vicinity of the Harts BBQ. And the more we look at that, the more we think, you know, it's one of those that's identified typically as a protect and construct over. And we're thinking we may want to take the opportunity to relocate about 550 feet of that line, but we do want to do a little more research and get back with you on that and discuss that with you on the 13th. So, we've got a couple of things up in the air. We don't think anything is real financially devastating by any means, but it may be prudent to make a few adjustments. Georgetown Tank pleased to report that Kempner Water Supply Corp opened bids for the coating system for Georgetown Tank. That's about 100,000 less than what was estimated. As background to counsel, the Georgetown Tank is part of the Kempner Water Supply Corp. 95 to 100% of that water that's in that tank at any given time is city water. They do use some of it for the neighborhood to the east, and actually to the east of Sunset, Sunrise Hills, excuse me. So, we by contract share in the cost for coating systems for the identified covered tanks. We pay as a percentage of, a contractual percentage based on the amount of water produced and the amount of water taken by Kempner, and that typically runs about 35% of the cost. So, if you want to do the quick math on that, if the bid came in at $634,000, you can generally think about 35% will be the city's share on that recoating. One thing that we do want to also talk to you about on the 13th is, they have bid as an alternate, a mixing system in Georgetown. We've, over the years, had trouble with maintaining residuals in that tank. In fact, in some cases, we've even cut the tank off, dumped the water, and not, we just haven't had enough flow through that tank. But I think Jason Jones would like to talk to you about the mixing upgrade. We are not contractually responsible for that upgrade. However, the benefits may be compelling and at least worthy of a discussion.
We used to have a mixing tank there.
Correct. And it failed.
And spent about $30,000 on the thing.
Correct.
And it failed, and we just removed it.
Correct.
And now we're going to do it again.
I think I'm going to let Jason talk to you about it, because I think what he has designed is something that is not as mechanically prone, would be as mechanically prone to that failure. It's more about reloc, pushing that water in different directions hydraulically as opposed to having a mechanical unit in there. But I'll let, I'll let Jason talk to you about that.
And just so that I can wrap my, the Georgetown Tank, is that one out? Old Georgetown, correct?
Correct. Yes, I'm sorry. It's the one just right south of town.
And we have a tank reserve, is that correct?
We have, we have a joint-use facilities reserve with Kempner, and we, as we discussed with counsel at one time, we asked that, I believe about 200,000 of that account be utilized to offset some of these costs. So yes, that is also being utilized for a portion of the, of the cost. Milfoil. Has anybody been down to the creek? Chuck, what do you think?
Great. For the first time ever.
Knocked it down after 25, 30 years, or maybe it's been talked about for 50 years. But anyway, we do want to maintain that somewhat maintenance treatment schedule, as well as they will be back here before too long for treatment on the golf, or golf course side of the dam. LCAD software, and I apologize about the timing of this, because some information has changed. You do have a letter at your seat on the dais. We published the council packet, and the information that we had at the time we published the packet is a little bit different than what we found out. LCAD did meet on, the board met on Friday and approved the upgrade to the software system. And I think originally, when I talked to Susan a week or two ago, she said, she seemed like it was about a 30-day process that you would have to consider vetoing this. But actually, I think statutorily, it's a 15-day, according to the letter she sent. Just a couple of things. You do have included in your packet kind of the pro, the benefits of this upgraded software, and as some of you, or as all of you hopefully recall, when we went through the budget process, we had an incredibly difficult time trying to obtain the rollback and the effective rate. That in some way was also triggered back to how their appraisals were inputted and the upgrade, the manual upgrade that was, that was required by LCAD in order to get those numbers or get that valuation. We think that this is, at least from staff's perspective, Yvonne and I have talked about it quite a bit. And of course, she was in the trenches on this, trying to figure this out back, you know, going back and forth with LCAD and Petri. It is a very, software is certainly at one of the premier issues with their efficiency and their effectiveness. This particular software will improve their ability to appraise, map, collect, collection calculations, et cetera. It does come at a hefty price tag. It's about $550,000, which can be paid out over seven years. What it impacts us, we pay our collections and our appraisal bill based on the levy. And the city has about 6% of the total levy for LCAD. So about 6% of that $78,000 would be the responsibility of the city, beginning in FY '23. Wouldn't be this year. It would be next fiscal year, and that's about $4,800 annually for the seven years. As her note indicates, they're currently paying maintenance on the software they have. They don't believe their maintenance expense for that software will be any greater. Again, I think from Yvonne and my perspective, and based on the amount that the city would participate, we feel like this is probably a reasonable thing to fund and approve, or approved by no action. However, should counsel want to consider vetoing this expense, we would have to call a special called meeting in order to do so.
I'm just curious. So we only have to pay 6%, is that what you said?
That's correct.
So who else?
And I apologize. It is, it is a percentage of the levy. So, our levy could fluctuate a little bit. As our levy may, or our valuation increases, it could fluctuate a little bit. But over the last couple of years, you know, I think our collections percentage was 6.12, and then our, but our appraisal budget was, you know, about 5.9%. So, I think it's safe to say about 6% is, will be a good target.
And then the county's paying for part of it in the school district?
Absolutely.
Well, that's what confused me, and that's why I asked you about it. Because the letter says 13%, and I knew your memo said 6, so.
So the levy percentage that we pay is 6%. What it does to our overall participation with LCAD is it raises it about 13%. So, for example, we pay in, Yvonne didn't hear, 81, we pay in about $33,000 to $34,000 a year to LCAD. So if you take $4,800 and divide it into $34,000, you're going to get somewhere around that 6%. But the, our, our total cost will be about $4,800 in addition to what we currently pay, which is about a 10, 12 to 13% increase.
But you're saying that it's justifiable.
In my opinion, it is, and in Yvonne's opinion, it is. I cannot speak, obviously, for the school district. School district's going to pay about 52% of that cost. So that's something I think, I've certainly had conversation with, with some of their staff on it, and they, I don't know what that board will do, but I think everybody understands that there, this is, this is one of the more glaring deficiencies in LCAD. I did invite Susan to come tonight, but she's out of town for the Thanksgiving holidays, but. I would be happy to run it your direction, or certainly if you have any additional comments, you can, you can call me with those. Moving on, just an update on a couple of quick projects. I did talk to Mr. Naylor this past week. They are working pretty diligently on the ASBeltz. He thinks those are going to be completed pretty soon. And we've already ordered the survey and geotech investigation. The survey will not be a full property survey because that's an unplanted, unplatted parcel, and so we don't, we just need to know the survey information to 281, for example, as well as anything to the, to the south. We met with, staff met with representatives from Lafta and the contractor on-site regarding the pavilion. The orientation is going to have to be adjusted just slightly. Again, that's because we're going from a 60-by-80 footprint to a 60-by-100 footprint. Contractor indicated that the pad work would commence probably in January or February. We have also been keeping an eye and talking with consultants on the wastewater pre-treatment project. We're hopeful maybe to have a design proposal by year-end, and also are working on parallel fashion with the implementation and cost methodology with the beneficiary. Christmas events, just hope, keep, keep these dates in your mind. December 6 at the Fire Department for the Community Lunch and Toy Drive. December 4 is Carol of Lights, and Christmas on the Creek. We'll have an event on December 11. I'd like to recognize the following employees who began their career with the City of Lampasses in November. Scott Haverly, five years. Charlie Boswell, 18 years. Jacob Hummer, eight years. Derek Eicher, six years. Mary Mendez, 14 years. Joe Schwartzser, 14 years. Mary Garcia, four years. Dylan Bovin, one year. Micah Harry, seven years. Josh Palacio, six years. Nick Roberts, nine years. Dwayne Griffin, 12 years. And also, I'm pleased to report that staff have made an offer to an applicant, a candidate for the Assistant City Manager position, and we understand that that is being received very positively, and hopefully we'll have more specific news to report to you in the very near future. Any questions?
Thank you, Finley. No mayor comments, and we also have no unfinished business going into new business. We have one item. Discussion and possible action to consider a request from Terrence Roberts and Tom Lancaster to close, abandon, vacate, and convey the alley in Block 76, Lampasses Springs Company First Edition.
Mayor and counsel, this item was discussed during public hearing, and I'm asking at this time to consider a motion to approve the frustrating of the ordinance.
Recommend approval.
Have a motion, need a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will be going into executive session for two items. The first, to receive and evaluate financial information received from a business prospect, to discuss same and/or to deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the city has received from a business prospect, that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or to, to deliberate an offer of any financial or other incentives to any business prospect described above. The second item is deliberation concerning the potential purchase, exchange, lease, acquisition, sale, and/or value of real property. I'd need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We have three motions coming out of the executive session. They'll be read one at a time and voted upon appropriately. First one is motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute a Chapter 380 agreement for improvements to public right-of-way for economic development purposes within parameters discussed in closed session.
Could I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Second motion is to authorize the city manager to negotiate, finalize, and execute a Chapter 380 agreement for electric improvements for economic development purposes within parameters discussed in closed session.
Need a motion?
Move to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objection?
Third motion is to authorize the city manager and city attorney to negotiate conveyance documents related to acquisition of real property within parameters discussed in closed session, and to bring back to council for consideration.
Need a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? We can adjourn the regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.